Thirty-six percent of seven hundred and five thousand dollars is still over a quarter of a million. And that's a considerable increase that we need to, that we need to work through, I think, before we move any further. And if we can have any kind of savings on that, I think it should be redistributed maybe into other areas of the budget that need it.
Can I ask a question? April, just to refresh my memory on that, it's a public assistance. And this is, the last couple of years, we've been splitting, I mean, best I remember, we would cut that in half, and it was still sufficient, correct?
That's correct. And the number that was actually entered by the DSS director originally has already been cut forty percent.
Been cut.
So, and actually, that particular budget, ten, six, twelve, that whole section is separate from what we can do with any operating funds. So, that, that can't be used for any type of operation. Now, we did work with Stacy on that reduction. And if you reduce this section, what happens is you reduce the revenue for this section also. So Commissioner Wagner is correct. We're on hook for about thirty-six percent of that. So, the number that's reflected on the revenue side of that is directly connected with what that number is in there.
So, if we drop that number, then our revenue number?
That is correct. We'll have to get with Stacy and see what that revenue number would be. Because each line in that public assistance, if you'll look at that section, and I've got it on the screen if you need it, each separate line in that detailed section represents something different. It may be foster care, it may be transportation for foster care, it may be just food stamps, it may be LEAP, which is the winter assistance, or fuel assistance. And I may get those acronyms a little bit wrong, but each line represents something different. So, that is not part, this ten, six, twelve section is not part of their operating budget. Now, we do have something in DSS's budget that we do have to address. In the top portion of their budget right here, she had entered in the system seventy-nine thousand dollars for, I believe this is attorney fees, and that was not transferred over when we went through the budget process. So, there is, there is a mistake in that budget right there that we will have to address.
Which one?
I've got it on the screen, and it's actually the social services operating budget.
We know how the public assistance is running far as cost bases. Like this year, or leftover, it's hard to tell.
It's, I can actually, I can log into the system and bring that up while we're here, and we can look at it. Give me just a second. But yes, the comment that was made about that section is always reduced, yes, it's always reduced. But if we reduce that section on the expenditure side, we do have to reduce the revenue. And we've already worked with Stacy to do that.
Was the main increase with social service for foster children?
Um.
Is that an assistance for them?
Part of it is foster care, and she actually requested another position, that community DSS assistant position to help with the foster care program. Because, you know, they've, they've had to keep children overnight in the building several times, and I'm not sure about the breakdown in that public assistance, though. That's something that Stacy provides us, and we go with her expertise as to how we need to reduce or increase.
Timmy, you sit on that board, don't you?
I do.
Actually, I do have a breakdown right here, but I didn't pass down.
I had a meeting in a couple of months, so I'm not sure.
I think, isn't one of the big things with foster care is, we just don't know how many we're going to have in a year's time.
Correct.
It may be a low number, or it may be an extremely high number.
Correct. There's no way to predict that.
And the bottom line is, if they run short, we have to come up with the money.
The only general line in the upper forties, number of kids, as a general rule?
I believe that's correct. And I believe that, I remember them saying they had more than fifty at one time. I don't know what the current number is.
Be now.
So, if we change the amount of the public assistance that we're budgeting for there, we're not going to, there's no way to realize any savings in that, even though it's our own money that we're contributing of that, that we're on the hook for thirty-six percent of the budget? We can't use that somewhere else?
We cannot use it in the operating fund or the general fund, no. And if we, if we reduce that bottom line in that public assistance section, we will have to go to the revenue side, and we'll have to get Stacy's input, and she's going to have to tell us what that revenue number is going to reduce to also, which is going to reduce our revenues. So, that's going to reduce our target number for a balanced budget.
Wouldn't it in turn reduce our cost at the same time?
And that, that section is an operating cost for the county whatsoever. I mean, it's, it's public assistance, and like Commissioner Irwin said, it's hard to predict how much is gonna, how much is going to be needed in the county for that section. Overall, yes, that's correct. I mean, we can reduce it, we could reduce it by a million, but we're going to reduce the other side by probably six hundred or seven hundred thousand, depending on which lines we reduce in that. Does that make sense?
What can that money be spent for if you can't use it for operations?
It's laid out in that detail that I just passed around.
So, the bottom number on this, they actually asking less money than they did last year, right?
Correct, and we've already reduced it forty percent.
Yes, but they're asking for a decent amount less than they did last year, so it's already less.
Well, let me, I may, I may have said that backwards, Timmy, so. No, it's, it's actually, at this time, it's six hundred and seventy-eight thousand more, yeah. But the number that was originally submitted, the one point seven, seven, eight million is forty pers, no, excuse me, sixty percent of the original submitted number. Reduced it forty percent, yeah.
I think the catch on that is, what Bobby said was, there's a lot of moving targets in the DSS. I mean, there's no guarantee of what's going to happen for the, over the next year. Oh, in the past budgets, you know, they rip on these deals, and for the last couple of years, we've been okay. But if something goes sideways, then we gotta, it's not, we don't have a choice. We gotta come up with extra money to cover that, because we only get X amount of money from state and federal. So, it's a moving target. It's a lot different than any other department.
It is a lot different than any other department. And the answer to your question is on the screen about how much revenue has come in, we've received seventy-five percent of the revenue that we had anticipated for this year. And that was two point two five six million, almost two point two five seven. So, we're not exactly on target with that number. It's, it's a little bit behind. We should be around eighty percent.
So, basically, you're saying we're a little bit behind in monies to take care of things to this point?
For the reimbursements, because everything in that section is a reimbursement from DSS. So, it depends on, like, like you were saying, it depends on, if we've got forty foster kids, but fifty percent of the foster care can be reimbursed, they're providing that care and that service first, and then we're receiving that money as reimbursement. So, it's possible that that is a little bit behind just because of the reimbursement effect of it, too.
On that piece of paper you have there?
Yes.
What's the rollover down towards the bottom, a hundred and some thousand?
Special adoption assistance, that is money that has been provided, I don't know if it's state or federal, for them to help with the adoption process of children here in the county. And it is a rollover. I had that conversation with Stacy, because actually, we had reduced that number, too, not, not knowing that it was really a fund balance right there. So, there is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars available to help with adoptions in the county.
I wonder how many adoptions they have over the last two or three years? Is it consistent, or is it up and down?
I don't know.
Timmy, do you know anything about adoption?
Got it right here. The adoption's completed in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, we're eight. Twenty-two to twenty-three, we're fourteen. Twenty-three to twenty-four, we're twelve. And this current fiscal year is four.
And it's forty, is that what you said, Gary?
Four.
Okay.
It's something that you just can't actually budget for to the penny, because it's an up and down influx in people or in situations.
There's, the adoption assistance caseload stayed between forty-five and fifty-two over that four-year period, forty-five, forty-seven, fifty-two, and forty-seven. Those were pretty consistent.
Is that too much in there? Or is that a cushion?
For the adoption assistance? That's the fund balance that they have, estate funds. That, that, that particular number is going to rollover.
They have any other rollover categories?
They have a donations line, yes, that's a rollover, but it's not, it's less than ten thousand dollars. Yeah, it's, it's not anything significant.
This is the only line item that, that they can rollover from year to year?
Yes.
What happens to the public assistance funds if, if they get this amount and don't expend it all, what happens to those funds?
This budget just ends at the end of this fiscal year, and we start with a new budget with this section.
Is that carrying?
Doesn't, it doesn't go in our fund balance or anything like that.
Let's say that they get one point eight million for public assistance and only spend one point three, what happens to the five hundred thousand?
It's just not spent.
It stays in there.
Well, it's not part of our fund balance, because it's not a revenue, but it's not spent, and we start over with a new budget.
They get to use it in public assistance for the following year?
No, they would start with the new number in this section.
What happened to that million, Bob?
It's, it's just an expense line. It's not a revenue line.
It is, ain't never been paid out the rest of the day.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Their total budget, the state or the federal are the biggest investors in their budget. What, is it the feds or the state?
I believe it's the state.
And we're the lowest of the three, except for, I guess, donations or grants or whatever.
I believe Stacy told us, and I probably have note, that pretty much sixty-five percent of their total budget is reimbursed.
Roughly.
Yeah.
Sixty-five percent.
Yeah, and Timmy confirmed that's correct.
That includes the rent, the reimbursement on the rent.
That is salaries, that's benefits, yeah.
I noticed on that page that April had cremations.
Yes.
Did we have any last year?
I don't know if we had any last year, but we've had some in the past few years, yes.
You know what the, I guess, the state charges, do you know what that fee is, or, Timmy, do you know?
She's got her own bill, worked that with somebody.
DSS has to arrange that. It's basically comes down to an unclaimed body.
That's one of these departments I wouldn't want to work in. They've got such a rough job.
Yeah, and that sixty-five percent reimbursement, if we didn't get that, we'd be in trouble.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's, that's a massive budget up there, the total, and.
Where you got two point six million in the operating budget, and then you got basically one point eight there in the public assistance.
Yeah, it's a massive budget.
I've got another question.
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't think we need to be, until we get, I don't think we have enough clarification on what the future is going to bring. That's our problem. Go back and look at the last five years, and, and come up with averages of what they've done and stuff. And if they come up short, they're going to be coming to see us.
The biggest change in the social service budget, they, we had budgeted two vehicles for this current fiscal year, which they have now purchased, so that's gone. There's nothing in the capital. And then her request for that community DSS assistant. So, no vehicles. But addition of some help with foster care program.
Any other questions, anybody?
Where are we? So, we still have to figure out, on the social services side, not the public assistance, where we're going to come up with seventy-nine thousand dollars, is that correct?
That is correct. Still have to.
What, what are our options on that piece?
I think moving forward with today to see what other questions that we have with each commissioner. I can look at it tomorrow. I'll have some time to look at it and see, I, I can look at revenues to see where we're at on revenues. Just to see how we can get that. It was a mistake to transfer.
I think we need to back up here and go by each section as we go across, and if anybody has any questions at that time about any particular thing, we'll address that, to make sure each department gets a, gets a prior shake. What do y'all think? Just back up to your front here. Expenditures, and let's go through, we at least mentioned which we're on, and go through the, if anybody has any questions about anything in that department.
Yeah. I'll just wait till we go through it, but my questions, a lot of them arise out of this letter that Mr. Shepherdley read the other day. We can go through these, I had a question on DSS, but I'm, I'm satisfied with that answer, but I've got several questions on the letter.
Okay, let's start with expenditures governing bodies. Does anybody have any questions about the, anything that's in the governing bodies?
Do our attorney fees go up?
Attorney fee itself, no, did not go up.
How come we added five thousand dollar difference on that?
I do, down at fifty-three hundred dues and subscriptions.
Just a second, Greg, did you get your question?
No, I just wondered how come the attorney fee went up five thousand dollars?
Well, we have paid more out in the current fiscal year, so we did add a little bit to that. But going back and look at the current, looking at the current fiscal year, she did a lot of work on the high school project, so.
Same rate, we just spent a little more.
Yes. Same rate, nothing's changed with the rate.
So, let, let's, let's start with, he's paid to elected officials. It's going up to forty-five thousand?
I can, I can address that. One of the things that I looked into was, it appeared that the payments to the board for your service was on the low side. So, I decided to look on, to go to the school of government and look at the twenty, they have statistics on everything related to counties. What I did was, I looked at the twenty counties in North Carolina that were similar in size, population-wise, to our county. And we were, we are the lowest, you board members are the lowest-paid board members of any county out of those twenty. And you're significantly low. It's about three thousand dollars apiece right now. And if you wanted to be average amongst those, those twenty, you would need to up that to nine thousand dollars for each board member, and ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the chairman. That would make you average among the twenty smallest counties in, in North Carolina, which, I mean, I think you need, at least need to move in that direction. I think it's, you're way off. The payment is way, way low.
Well, I, I just think Allegheny County being basically the fifth smallest county in the state, I don't agree, I didn't run for this office for the money, and I can't see that kind of a raise. If anything, I'd always toyed with the idea of lowering it, but I, I can't go along with giving myself a raise. I don't, I can't speak for the other ones, but I didn't run for this office for the money. So, I'm a no on that one.
Mr. Chairman? The way I look at it is, and I completely, I have total respect for what you just said, and I, I understand that you might, you might feel that way. But I also feel like it's my responsibility to look at what's going on in the, in the state of North Carolina, and what is the norm, and to try to make us within reach of the norm. And I, you know, this is nothing that you, this board did not petition me to do what, what I'm doing right now. What I'm telling you is that, and I'm looking at all the statistics, I'm looking at all the employees and seeing, are we off on, in, in every position in the department level? So, you're not just, it didn't just pick you all out to take a look at it. But I appreciate the attitude, the approach that you have, Bobby. But I think it's my responsibility at least to tell you what the norm is, and let you decide how you want to move forward. I think you're, I mean, being number twenty out of twenty, and not being number twenty out of twenty population-wise, you need to raise it to some degree.
We're at the lowest.
You're the lowest one of the twenty.
I don't, I don't think any of us do it like Bobby said, but at the same time, you hate to take money out of your own pocket to, to pay county expenses, travel into meetings, and, and one thing, and the other. I mean, we make about three to three or four hundred dollars a month. Must speak that, don't, that won't hardly cover your guys a lot of times, and nobody's doing this thing to get rich by no means.
You spend a lot of time, a lot of hours that people don't even realize, and like you said, I don't think not a single person here would get, went to get elected to make, to actually have an income from this. This is farthest from our minds, and I didn't even know what they, I didn't even know what we made, I didn't even know how much it was. But it's, you get in it, and you actually do your job, and you go to all, and, and it's put on us by the bylaws that you've got, we're on all these committees. And some of us, I mean, I know Greg's got lucky enough to get to the retirement place and retirement, but some of us have got full-time jobs now. But when you did have a full-time job, it's, it's, it takes, I mean, you're taking away from your work. So, I, I mean, the common sense, I understand it. The, the other thing, like, from what Bobby said, I understand that, too, but, I mean, this is one of those things, it, it definitely needs to be addressed. I mean, you go on another two, three, four years, anyway.
You know, the public needs to know that, I mean, this board is very involved and spends a lot of time. I mean, you all know what's going on in any of these topics. I'm able to pick up the phone and, and talk to any one of you, and you're not behind on what's going on in a particular issue. I mean, you're involved, you spend a lot of time, you know, and doing things and, and participating, and, and I, I know that you're doing it because of your love for Allegheny County. You're not doing it, and even this increase doesn't, it's not going to change your lives in any, it's not that big of an increase that'll change your lives in any significant way. But you do need to be compensated in a manner that's consistent with what the state expects, and what this, what the state is doing to compensate people for putting this volunteer time into, into action.
We getting paid for this meeting today? All the budget meetings, it's a no, right?
Any work sessions or regular meetings?
That we take minutes from.
Yes.
How does they pay work, anyway? You're supposed to get paid every month?
Yeah, everybody get paid for last month, so. In process.
Get it down to the.
Yeah, what, what the schedule is now is, we'll pay in May for April.
Nobody's told us, we didn't know what was going on. Because last year, we went three or four months and never got paid.
So, who, the way I understood, you, there's like this specific meeting, you get X amount of money, right?
Yeah, the chairman gets four hundred dollars stipend, and the rest of the board members gets two hundred and fifty dollars stipend per month, and then it's forty-five dollars per month currently on top of that stipend. So, a regular month of board meetings, like, the chairman would get four hundred and ninety dollars, and then the rest of the board would get three hundred and forty.
If the.
That for dinner.
I know there's a way, you know, that, to do this, but it sure seems to me like it's a conflict of interest, or at the least, the appearance of a conflict of interest given ourselves taxpayers' money.
Congress since done it for a hundred years, so.
I mean, I know there's a way to do it, because it's done throughout the state, but it sure smells to me.
Well, that, that's one of the reasons why, and maybe you could still say it's a conflict of interest, but that's why I felt I needed to say it. I needed to be the one that, that says it, because it's clear on, on the sheet, and, I mean, if you all wanted me to at the next, on the Thursday meeting, I could bring in that list, and you could see what your comparisons are. I mean, some people, some are in the ten thousand dollar.
I don't, I don't care what another county gets.
Okay.
I'm interested in what this county gets. I look at this twenty thousand that could go to the recreation department, go to EMS, go to something. Twenty thousand dollars on this big budget is a minute amount, but twenty thousand dollars to an individual budget can make a big difference.
I respect that, I'm just, I'm doing my duty, letting you know.
I appreciate.
What I discovered.
Just donate, George, if you don't want, just donate the rest of, we'll pay you.
You're all right there.
Anyway. Anybody else have any thoughts about the, the increase for the commissioners?
No.
All right, moving on. All right, moving on. Is that all? Anybody on this total page of government bodies here? Any other questions?
No, I was, I had dues and subscriptions.
Okay.
Break fifty, there's twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. And two or three other little ones in there.
Um, the big one is the High Country Council of Government, because they've gone up on their dues several years in a row.
And they've raised their dues. We've got no say in what they say.
That's correct.
And do we get our, I know we've had this discussion in the past. Do we get our money's worth out of them?
Well, right now, they're handling the NAPCO project. So any kind of reporting that goes to Department of Commerce for that grant program that NAPCO, we just got an extension on. And actually, they did most of the work on that extension.
We are getting our money's worth.
They provide a decent amount to council aging.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a big chunk of council aging money. So at one time, they usually do a little, little flyer with like seven or eight dollars a person. I think the last time they're saying that we get, or that's how much we're getting paid back.
And they just completed that CTP, the Community Transportation Program. Oh, that's a big one. And that's one that's, that's one that's got to be in place. And every so often, the county's got to do it, so.
Sponsored by the.
If the, yeah, if the COG didn't organize that and complete that, someone here would be doing it.
Yeah.
I think we get a good bang for a buck from the COG because they got grant writers and they've helped in many ways.
They're available to help with a lot of the grant stuff. And even if we are issued a grant, just like the NAPCO, it's over our head to sort of oversee that. Think they could do a good service. I think it'd be, be good if we dropped that situation.
Anything else, government bodies?
Not me.
All right, moving on across the administration. Any?
Fourteen hundred. Continual education and travel. Increase of six thousand?
Yeah, I can explain to you. I can, Mr. Chairman, if. So I think that the person in my role should be involved in the state and should be involved in the, in legislative issues and let our voice be heard. And from what I understand, I think that, I'm not saying it was anything bad, but I think Michael was maybe not as, not so involved in that. I've been involved in working with the state of North Carolina for twenty-five years in various areas. I want to continue to do that and I want to increase that. I want to go to legislative days and talk to our, our senators and advocate on our behalf. And, uh, you know, most of the time, it won't cost us that much because I can, I have a house near where I'd have to go in Raleigh. If it's a Raleigh mission, I can just stay at my house and I can stay in it. But I gotta travel and I gotta eat and things like that. And there's, there's about three or four events over the course of the year that I'd like for, like to be involved in. And so it's an increase because I place more emphasis on having us, our voice be heard outside the county.
I know some of the school of government classes that, that are attended are three and four and five hundred dollar registration fees.
And they're great. Some, their classes are great. Yes, you're right.
I like the involvement, um, you know, to stay in touch with state stuff and what's going on. And I think it's money well spent to, long as, you know, you do that and initially you could be down there on those certain days because a lot of us can't. And so I, 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 I feel like it's money well spent and we'll see how, see what the fruits may become of that of maybe your first year. See, you know, if we, you know, another year goes around and it's like, but I still think it's wise if you show your face down there and you talking about the different things. And you get an opportunity with different representatives to talk about the things of Allegheny County needs and stuff. It's important. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Any other questions? If not, move on over to the finance office. A long, longevity jumps.
Well, we added the HR position this past year and Tiffany's been here doing this off the top of my head, but fifteen or sixteen years. I'm a twenty-two year veteran.
That's about eight thousand dollar increase on the longevity, just in my head.
Uh, a lot of that is adding the HR to that budget, but again, my twenty-two. Right now in the office, this is the longest we've had full staff. So we, we have a few.
But so how long they have to work before they get to that longevity?
One year.
One year?
Yep.
So as you get, so a person that's been, then they on the longevity list.
Moving right on down below that professional services sixty thousand and there wasn't nothing in that line last year. What is that?
Well, that's a detail line. Uh, if you look at the screen, um, all of that is the same. All of this adds up to the eighty-two ninety. So last year, our professional services was seventy-six, three fifty. That is, um, detailed out on my side of it because this helps me keep up. Four hundred dollars is a law enforcement separation allowance report that we have to pay for, for transparency. The sixty thousand dollars is the audit, which includes the town fifteen million grant that we're handling and the school project. The fourteen thousand dollars is the, is the cost of the financial statements for all of that. And eighty-five hundred dollars is OPEV report, which is stands for other public employment. Those are things that we statutorily have to do.
The questions?
Just one, there's a eleven thousand increase in computer software. Is that a new program or?
It's the same thing, Bobby. It's a detailed, um, if you look at the screen again, see those, those lines are the same number. And if you look at the nineteen thousand one forty-seven from last year, it only went up to twenty thousand fifty dollars. Yeah, it's just, it's a detail line. That's our computer finance software is what that is. And that's the security of that, the hosting of that and everything that.
Move on over to.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. The increase in salaries, is that just to cover the four percent cost of living? Because four percent looks like it's about eleven thousand eight hundred.
No, there's a couple of salary adjustments that's been done by the county manager in that, uh, number also.
Any other questions?
Do you send us a breakdown at some point, please? Of what that breaks down to?
Want to break down everybody's salary?
What, where, uh, what we're doing beyond the four percent cost of living adjustment?
Well, we're not doing anything in this proposed budget beyond the four percent.
Any other questions?
So you wanted to break down from this past year, right, Garrison?
I'm just curious because the, the two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four percent of that's eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars. But the difference in salaries, twenty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
And when this spreadsheet was, um, exported out of the system, that was the amount that was budgeted in this line. So there's been a couple of adjustments by the county manager to salaries in the finance and HR department. So yeah, there's, there's a little bit of difference in there. But for this proposed budget, the only thing that's being proposed is a four percent increase like everyone. Help clarify?
Folks, you're welcome. You're right. What we want the information on was the two?
Yeah, five people in this department. Which two are we re?
Oh, no, you just said you made adjustments to on the salary, but the manager did. I don't know which two you're referencing to. Guess where we was getting to? Any other questions? IT?
Chairman, if you need information on that, those two right now, I can just tell you what it is if it, if that's what you want. You talking about from this past year. Okay, in this past year, when, uh, uh, April's position was changed from being finance director and county, assistant county manager. Assistant county managers make less than finance people make. And so her salary was adjusted by three thousand dollars. And the reason for that is that her budget that she's managing went from twenty-three million dollars a year to seventy million dollars a year. And nine, there's nine counties that are way, that pay much more than she gets paid. She's in the middle of the, the counties that are of our size. But none of these counties are managing a budget of seventy million dollars. So it was warranted, in my opinion, to give her a three thousand dollar increase. And that's what I did. Now, the other one is for Tiffany Joyner. Do you all know who, you know Tiffany? She's the HR director. She, Boyer, I'm sorry. Um, we had a Tiffany Joyner in my other job. And she went through like a, kind of a training period at the beginning of the time that she was coming on board when April was still involved with her. When she became independent and able to handle it completely on her own, I gave her, I think it was a three thousand dollar raise. Those are the two raises that I've provided to staff over the, the past year.
Appreciate that info.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Move on over to IT. Have any questions there? Who's the same?
IT is going to go up a little bit every single year. You know, as new innovations come into place and stuff, but this is, I felt was reasonably within what the request was from last year.
Board of Elections. About ten thousand dollar increase from.
And it was, she can request for adjustment to the board members. She, uh, just has discovered or, or I don't know if she discovered, but she's petitioning for higher pay for the board members of the Board of Elections. And I think that's the, where is that on here? Let me see, that would be.
Very first line, but really nothing has changed with that.
It looks like most of hers is part-time and full-time with the, I guess, a four percent increase.
I mean, if you look at it, the biggest part of the increase is something we don't have control over, FICA and longevity and all of those add up to nine or ten thousand dollars.
About a half with Board of Elections. We'll move on over to Recreation. Okay, we have about a nineteen thousand dollar cut.
What happened to the need for, for uniforms? Do we have an adequate amount of uniforms? Or did we receive any grant funding for uniforms that it went down almost seventy-five hundred dollars?
There was a grant that was received from Allegheny Cares for uniforms.
It was a two-year grant, wasn't it?
It was, yeah.
This was the last year, correct?
Just quickly, I mean, his is one of the largest items for a budget. I've just looking at the people that are applying, there are supplies for youth soccer, baseball, all of that. A lot of that seems to be going down. But yet, we're told we're having more and more people apply for, you know, to play baseball, softball, all the other. How does fewer people or more people in less equipment, how does that work out?
Are actually seeing numbers lower than what has been projected for most of these activities. The reality is there's, there's less people.
When you're seeing some act. Harrison, I own the Recreation Committee and alls we ever hear is these big numbers, more and more people wanting to play baseball, softball. There's not enough places for them to practice.
Andy has turned our parks and Recreation around since COVID.
Well, that's what I don't understand the difference.
I don't either. He's made big gains in, in most of that stuff in, in participation.
He certainly has put his heart into the, what he needs to work on and we, we're working with him on is making sure that actions that he's taken can be, are measurable. The things that are happening are measurable and we're getting accurate numbers on his patient. Just to work on that. We're working with him on that. We're, we've adjusted numbers based on what the, what we have seen as the reality of the situation.
Based on actual numbers, not just what somebody's saying we got. Okay.
I mean, explain where actual numbers come from. I mean, I don't, I'm a little off cue here as to where the actual number of participations is per sport.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you look on the screen, there's the revenue numbers from the apartment for Recreation.
You enlarge that thing a little bit.
Focus.
Don't look at the thing.
I'm glad. I knew while I was getting control.
I, I can read them to you, no problem. Um, soccer revenues, we've only brought in forty-four percent.
How many people's they equate to? In soccer?
I, I can't answer that one for you.
Forty-four percent of what, I mean?
The projected revenue, um.
Projected, going to take.
The projected revenue was four thousand dollars. We've only brought in seventeen hundred and eighty-five. The projected revenue for Little League revenues was five thousand dollars. We brought in three thousand and fifty-six dollars. Youth basketball was projected at fifty-five hundred dollars. We only, we have nine hundred and twenty dollars worth of revenue. Off revenues, two hundred and ninety, which we didn't predict anything there. Um, concessions, we predicted a thousand, two hundred dollars is actual. Youth volleyball, we predicted a thousand eight hundred and forty dollars is actual. Uh, Veterans Memorial Park fees, we predicted five hundred and actual is thirteen hundred and fifteen dollars. Davis Field fees, a thousand, nothing's been generated. And Department of Recreation, thirteen thousand six eighty. But that eighty-five fifty is actually the grant from Cares is what that is.
On the uniforms?
So what you're saying, not many kids playing sports is where they projected.
That's right.
Good number to go by. It's like the basketball one there, which is over now. That's done. There won't be any more basketball league.
It was field ain't been, it's beginning.
Nine twenty and he, they predicted fifty-five hundred. That's a big, big difference.
Question is how much the interference is with getting fields up there and stuff for them too? I know they've been going to other schools. I just.
They still pay so much like a fee per person, right? I think per kid. So I think that's what those numbers are based on, what. Kid that he bring.
One part of that is he's got no capital outlay. For capital equipment, last year we had that $8,000 more. I mean, that's a big chunk of it. But I just. Last Thursday night, we went and had dinner at the New Mexican place. And I had three different sets of parents come up to me and say, why can't we find a place for these kids to practice?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's all. Can't blame this all on Randy for bad numbers because there's other things that's interfering.
I mean, how?
You know, with the with the program.
Less numbers, the people were still saying complaining.
I hear it too.
I think I think that's a direct result of the complaints is that we'll continue to see some level of attrition and some level of leakage. Uh, to families and kids who desire to go outside of the county to go to a different rec department. That may have more playing time or more available practice fields, and I don't think we'll see a change in that attrition level. Until we are able to move forward with a plan that gives us uh some better infrastructure, some better facilities to meet those needs.
Well, you've got travel teams in baseball, you got travel teams in volleyball, you got travel teams in softball. Probably basketball. Those are four of your and then throw win soccer. Those are four of your biggest sports. Now, is it because these numbers are dwindling because we don't have a place for them to practice? And a place for them to play? Now, when they start traveling, that's economic development for another county, not for us. I don't know if we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not having the facilities for them. And I just get sort of confused here a little bit.
I I think we're making a lot of progress on the the development of the the facility. Uh, we're working closely with the school board and I met with the superintendent uh yesterday. And we're looking to set up a joint meeting with some folks to talk about a proposed site and a joint venture opportunity. So hopefully we can make some progress there, but it's just as far as tying back to the budget. Um, I think it would be common if you looked across the state to see that recreation departments don't typically generate a whole lot of revenue. You know, for the county, I don't think that's something we can really count on for revenue. Um, that's why, you know, I I think it's, I I think it's imperative we question why we're, you know, reducing the the supply amounts there. Because I I think we should typically expect to not, you know, not typically, but generally expect to not turn a huge. Uh, margin on on these items. This this is for the benefit of the community and the youth, not to, you know, turn a dollar. I I think that's a common thing. If you were to look at rec departments across the state, I don't know how, you know, profitable they would be.
I think that one of the things that we need more accurate projections from our our Director of Recreation. And we need him to come to the Recreation Committee and say, these are my obstacles. That are stopping me from being able to get these numbers. And work with us and we'll we'll, all of us that are, you know, involved in the Rec Committee and the Board will. Work to overcome those obstacles. We'll work with him to do that.
And at this time, I don't, if you don't have numbers, proof of numbers of folks, you don't need to keep buying equipment. So I mean, you got to have the people to buy the equipment for first. So whatever that takes to do that, but as far as this budget, I understand what you're trying to do.
I I think too that there is strong momentum towards. You know, working towards the ball fields and I think we got a good, good group of folks. You know, multiple organizations working together to try to move that process forward. And I think that, like Garrison said, I don't think that will be remedied overnight. But when it does come into play, I think we'll see a. A pretty intent, you know, pretty massive change in participation. And also a big economic development boon for the for the county. So I think the future looks good and we're on the right path. We got the right people in place to to make that happen. We just have to. This is the facts as of right this second.
Any other questions, comments? We'll move on. Economic Development.
I will explain my blue highlighting. That means there is a matching line on the revenue side to go with that. So that is actually the NAPCO project that we were talking about earlier with COG.
But what are? Are we going to go through this? What are all these different line items, marketing strategy? Code development?
I can address the streetscape project. That is something that um the county has an agreement with with the town to pay for the streetscape.
We're stuck with that for how many more years?
I'm not sure, Bobby. I have to.
How many years did you vote for it, Bobby?
And then um the marketing strategy, I'll address that one. Um, that is to help with the wayfinding signage in conjunction with the T D A and the town.
It's for the signage. 90,000. Say it for.
90,000 is a proposal. Uh, that I I'm putting forward to have two $45,000 uh economic development grants available. For either new businesses that want to come into the community or existing businesses that want to expand. And what they would have to do is they would submit their business plan um to the board. Uh, we would review it and we would pick two that we think have put forward a good, solid plan that's sustainable. To either launch a new business or to expand an existing business here in the county. Um, it's sort of like uh in other counties like in Virginia, they have like what's called an Economic Development Authority. Which is a, it's a another into another type of legal entity altogether. But this gives us a means to be able to say, okay, what do we think we need in the county? Who can we reach out to? Or who wants to? If they could get a jumpstart, who wants to come into our county and who do we want to have come into the county? That's what that money is there for.
We went through something like this about. Five years ago with Chamber of Commerce when they changed their names and combined them. And we gave them. Forty or 50,000 a year for two or three years and got nothing out of it. Is money wasted? I'd rather see this money go to the rec department to build some fields. And you talk about economic development instead of spending 90,000. Eventually we'd make back 90,000.
I agree with that, but I'd like to take 10,000 that, I mean, 5,000 put toward the agriculture fair. Because they was 10,000 two year ago and got cut last year to five. But agree with you on that. All you're going to do is make another business mad if they don't get the grant that already exists and who's going to vote on that anyway?
Well, the board could or the, you know, what typically happens is there's an Economic Development. Committee that votes on it. And it's been very successful in most of the counties in in North Carolina and Virginia.
He had that committee came in here. I think Bill, you were on the on it at that time. They had all these great numbers that they were floating around. And we didn't see a penny come back from what we put into it. And I'm afraid this be, I'd rather spend this on something I know that's going to bring us some money eventually.
I think it's a little bit different than Chamber, correct? So basically, if somebody's coming in here and starting a business and hiring employees, that's what I guess you're looking at.
You're right.
You know, three employees or whatever, so.
B D C. B D C does a little bit of that.
Yeah, it'd be a little bit different than the Chamber. I think we're just giving them money for economic development and hoping they could bring in work. So you're saying that somebody already decided to come here and start a business.
To attract those that might be looking to start a new business somewhere in this region and.
Culture recognition, that is the awards banquet, correct? Yeah. They might squeak by on that, I don't know. But the fire definitely needs some help. Last year was a tough year. As we all know, the Helene came through that same weekend. And we did kind of come out with our shirts on by canceling two events that we was going to have. But we really need to help the fire out to be able to have a fireless. We we look at this thing as a lot of kids in this county, they'll spend a couple of days out there. That'll be the vacation they get. And we just do this to try to keep the the admissions low or they can afford it. And it ain't going to make money. It's it ain't, it ain't going to make money for that part. It's kind of like Carroll County does theirs over. It's it's a, it's a good thing.
What do you think that, what kind of money do you think they they need in order to be able to?
I talked with them yesterday and and they had asked for 25 in their ask. Am I correct? Right, so we got them down to 5,000, 10,000 last year, right?
Year before last.
Year before last.
Last year was five.
I would like to see it go to 20,000 and and the town kicked in five, well, that would put them at their total of 25. That's still short what their total ask was.
Because they get some from T D A.
Get some from, well, they do a request for T D A and they've gotten some the past couple of years.
Which they usually get.
It's a $100,000 fire, right at it, 97. You remember?
And just to drop back one one section, I forgot that we gave Economic Development money to the grocery store that moved in. I can't even remember their names. $20,000. They couldn't make it and left. We'd given them the 20,000, then they asked us to forgive them paying it back. And finally, the board had enough backbone to say, no, you voided the contract, you owe us the money back. And we did receive all the money back. But we've had these economic development things before. But if we ever entered into them, there needs to be an ironclad contract. Uh, you look at, not magnolia, but what was it?
Bristol.
Bristol.
Yeah. We lost our shirts on that. The county taxpayers did.
Well, in in Grayson County, we we used this money and expanded three businesses. One of which became the provider of the product that they have on a worldwide basis. So there there are very successful examples of how the money's used. But I would say, I mean, it sounds to me like. And you guys correct me if I'm wrong. I'm hearing. A lot of support for let's move ahead more quickly in the recreation area. And let's make sure we take care of the the county fair. Exactly. So what if, why don't we, here I got a proposal for you. What if we just say, and it's kind of like, I think, almost what Greg just said. What if you said $10,000 for the county fair and $80,000 would go to towards the the ballparks? Since the ballparks are like an act really economic development in in its own way.
I think that's something to, you know, when we go through all of this, see how much some of us. Would like to see change and make those changes if everybody wants to.
It just, it's just a uh something for you to shoot at, you know? But you know, um, I, you know, I still believe in the in doing the grants for the places. But the reality is we we're a team, you know, we got to all work together. So if there's a, if there's a greater emphasis in a different area, time to be flexible and figure out how to best do that. And what I said, Bill, was what about $10,000 for the county fair? And $80,000 for the ballfields?
It's going to put. All right.
Saying an additional $10,000.
He's splitting the 90,000.
I know, Russ, one of it's, here we are. We 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 fundraise a whole lot more. The county puts in this thing. And they they really work hard. They do. The businesses support it good and. And I would like to say is try the best, stay at 20 for the fair. We'll make do with, we'll make do with the wagon banquet.
That's what he's doing, I think. The total will be 20.
I'm talking about adding 10,000 more.
Would be 15.
15. I thought it was 10. Okay.
Yeah, adding 10 to it, correct.
Yeah.
Adding 10.
But I'm, but this is just.
Fine, let's just go add 15.
It's all for the kids.
So add 15 to it and put the rest toward the ballfield.
It's all.
That would be 15 and 75. The old thing.
I wonder, what about, we need to vote on it? The total on the fair is 20,000.
Total on the fair would then be.
20,000.
20,000.
20,000, yeah.
Just a start.
You guys think?
It works. Public Garrison?
No, no. No, I was just doing some figuring.
We're we're talking about making the. Fire go to 20,000, 75,000 for the.
Recreation.
Recreation, right?
Ballfield, yeah.
Ballfield.
I'm I'm not going to oppose that. I'd rather see 90,000 go to the rec of these proposed practice fields. 20,000 come back out of the. Out of government bodies on our raises, put all that into the proposed practice fields. But if we, the fairgrounds are extremely important. That's the big economic draw. So if we want to split some of this money and give the fairgrounds, that's fine with me.
You really look at our our rec department, what we fund them, a little little under 200, 197 something. And you look around the other counties, we are less than half. And our rec department is to what other counties are doing. And I know we're a small county. I understand all that. We spend our money like we're small counties too.
Our biggest. The thing that we have to do in in the rec areas, we've got to get better control over. Projections and expenditures and if we can do, get that really firm foundation in place, that will enable us to to be able to grow. We can't grow right now a tremendous amount the way it is right now. We've got, it's got to be made more. Um, transparent, it's got to be more.
Fair friendly.
More organized, yeah. It's, we have to get that, once we get that under control, the expansion can occur. And then hopefully it grows to be a, you know, uh, one of the main attractions of this county is to come here for sporting events.
We got, we got a nice venue out there. Your evening sun is behind you. You don't sit there and cook and burn up and we got a nice grandstand and.
The thing, the thing with the just talking practice fields, we're not talking about the sports complex that we. At the same time, we're looking at, which was six or seven million. The only way we'd ever get that would be through state funding grants and and whatnot. But what we're focusing on right now, the Recreation Committee, and I would hope the rest of the board, is additional practice fields. So. At the best, at the absolute best, if we agreed on something for this budget. You may be able to use it next spring.
Right.
Maybe. But if not, you're looking at the following year.
Yeah.
So we need to do something in this budget to get us started.
Do want to throw one more thing out there about the fire, last year's fire, like I said, we all knew about the rain event. But the man that owns the rides really bent over backers to help us. He reduced his fees by a great deal. Because he didn't run a couple of days. He didn't have to do that. He could have, he could have held to his guns and we'd had to pay the full thing. But he's a nice guy and that's the reason our date for the fire is all based on his ability, what weekends he can be here. We have no control over that. So anyway, I appreciate it. I'm sure the fire ground, fire people appreciate it.
That's your chairman?
Ag advisory, yes, sir.
During the conversation, I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. During the conversation, I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. They, we talked about the fairgrounds. And we talked about the fair.
Fair is what we're.
The fair is what we're talking about.
I just, everybody understands.
Ag advisory board, that's who runs it.
Okay. All right.
It's added extra. We got some extra for the fair. For the fair.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we said $15,000 additional for the fair and $75,000 for the ballfield.
I have it on the.
Good. Okay. And that's a great step in the right direction. We've already got $100,000 set aside in the Beamer Fund and the school systems, got about $100,000 in grant money too. So we're just south of $300,000 and that's a great step in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that is helping us a lot is the new formation of the recreation committee. With the addition of the school and, you know, other groups and with Garrison's chairmanship of it. It's now, the spirit is there, you know, this is the time to make it happen.
I agree, I think it was a good move to implement that committee. Anything else? Moving on over to tax administration.
The foreclosure fees, that is what legal fees? We, we foreclosed, do we get that legal fee back?
Um, I don't know the answer to that, but there's another law firm that handles all of that, because it can't be done.
Some reason I thought we had got a percentage or, never mind.
And it may be what it sells for, because, you know, most of those are either advertised for bids or on the front steps of the courthouse. Yeah. I would like to point out one thing in Rita's budget, when we went back through and had to take a percentage out of each budget. There was originally 92,000 in that revow escrow account transfer. So that, we will have to make that whole at the end of the year somehow. Okay.
The questions? Big office.
Pretty much the same. Moving on, GIS.
Was the capital 8,000?
It was an upgrade on a program that Mary asked for. And I can look in my notes if you want to know the specifics of it.
It's a computer upgrade, program upgrade.
Yeah, it's a program upgrade, yes.
We're at 415, do we want to truck on to five or what's the board's feelings?
It was advertised to.
Was, okay, I thought you said four, okay, forget that. Register deeds.
You're going to ask if we wanted a break?
Take a five minute break.
Sir. I am, I'm taking it in.
To have flexibility to succeed, you know? Effort. Flexibility.
Give me a pic.
Close to be.
That's good, thank you.
I think, I like the way we're working these things out.
I just think we need to go with department.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of like, okay, that's out of the way, now we can get on to the next one.
I think it'd be good to maybe invite Randy back in.
Yeah.
We need to. Can't believe you won't give us an extra dollar. Don't get over here where you can hear me. I said, I can't believe you won't give us an extra dollar.
Look here.
Oh, yeah, you're counting your dollars.
Now wait just a minute. Get this.
It's on here.
Medical. Up another 15 cents in three weeks.
You boys retire this year. You don't do all that one.
I can't.
It ain't no one, you don't want no increase here.
I can't with that.
Well, that's pretty tough right there. That $2,000 a batter. Three, what is that, cow?
Bull.
Bull. What happened to him?
Got no idea.
Turned in to farm service?
Not mine.
Well, who's this?
He's been dead for a week. I've been to the sheriff's department, I've been to the vets, all the neighbors, nobody claimed that bull. He showed up in my lawn. Somebody turned him in.
He said there was a big house, a really large house by his house.
And he lives on Bullhand.
He lives at 986.
Register deeds don't look like there's any change. $500 is all.
Register deeds and the building inspection and planning office, they're splitting the cost of a platter. And that's what that 34, 38 and the capital purchases. See the same thing to building inspection.
All right, flipping page, kitchen and meals.
We got working out the kitchen now.
Full time and two part time.
We got some more help.
Two full, two part.
Cost has gone down and.
They're saving that much money on food.
Um, changing of suppliers, deals with Foodline and some local Truvine deals. And even looks at all the options.
A question, we moved over, this is second. When we made, when the original proposals were turned in, I'm just looking at register deeds, for example. Did the department heads choose which items were cut when we were needing to make those cuts? Or did we kind of choose which lines would be cut? Because I see their dues and subscriptions are down to zero. Line item. Who made the call, I guess that's what I want to know, is who made the call on where we were cutting that when we needed to cut?
We made those calls. And, but, but let me say this too, Garrison, I think that it's important for the whole board to hear this, which is brought up as a good point. There's nothing magic about the, the thing that we had to do was get a certain amount of money out of their budget. If they can get the money from a different line item and restore one that they don't think should have been cut. There's no problem from my perspective, no problem in doing that. So we just did the best we could on figuring out how to get them, get it so we had a balanced budget. So if they come back and if we're saying, okay, you need to cut $3,000 out of your budget. We don't care what line item it comes from, as long as they can do it. And we're asking everybody to contribute to making that happen. And there's 54 departments and organizations that have submitted their budgets to us. So.
If something doesn't make sense, they can resubmit.
Yeah, they could just say, you know, as long as they get, have the same bottom line. They could change the line items, we don't, it's no problem at all. We would like for them to do that.
Thinking back about registered deeds, dues and subscriptions, I believe they're mandated on some of that stuff. If I remember correctly, from four or five years ago. Believe you said she is coming to the meeting Thursday?
She is coming to the meeting.
Okay, oh, just thinking back, trying to remember from years back, I believe they're required on some of this stuff. Any other questions on registered deeds?
Does that make sense, Garrison?
Okay, I appreciate it.
Kitchen and the meals, any questions on that? With buildings?
So, law enforcement center. Something going on there?
Roof.
It's in bad shape.
Okay.
So we're looking at, we'll put that out for bid, if, once the budget is approved. It's gonna have to be fixed.
If it doesn't get fixed, there's gonna be a collapse and then we're gonna have a really big expenditure.
Is the heat and AC corrected for good now? Hopefully.
Getting it doing, just fixing that roof on it?
Yeah, it'll still be a flat roof and what that will consist of would be a roof like the college, like we put on the college. Yeah, it'll still be a flat roof and what that will consist of would, would be a roof like the college, like we put on the college. It has a, a warranty along with it, uh, the warranty for materials and the warranty for labor.
Sherman Williams, I remember was, is that correct? Was the name of that roof at the college?
Yes, it came from Sherman Williams.
That's turned out to be pretty good.
Yes.
What's the capital purchase?
Roof, roof at the jail for sheriff's department.
Are you looking at that line or the line above it?
What was the seventy-five thousand?
Roof.
Roof.
Okay, what was the twelve thousand above that?
Um.
There's things.
One for day mark, the, the siding has rotted. Uh, we've got to replace the siding as well as the roof on that first building. Um, for some reason, the roof, when it was fixed, they only replaced half of it. The backside of that building still has the roof on it from however many years ago it was put on. So they're having, they're, they're beginning to have some issues with it. So we're gonna fix the whole roof, all of it at the same time. Have it, have the, I believe it's twenty-five sheets of T-one-eleven siding that needs to be replaced and then painting.
Is roof a shingle or metal?
Shingle.
Now, where does the black building come in under public buildings? Is that in this part? Or is that in the maintenance?
I think that would be in the maintenance part.
Okay.
Mm-mm, in the fairgrounds.
The fairgrounds maintenance.
In fairgrounds ma- okay.
Yes.
Those prisoners, it doesn't matter if they get a little wet.
I don't know if the roof falls in on their head.
It doesn't bother me.
Other questions on public buildings? Not moving on over sheriff's department.
A hospital insurance expense? Two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand?
That's for, it's figured at twenty-seven employees, but they actually have twenty-eight. But they usually have at least one in turnover.
Why was it zeroed last year?
That's one of those detail lines again. If you'll look at it, it's a detail line. The three above it are the same thing. So it's actually entered in the first one and that bold is the, the sum. Yeah. It's not in there twice.
Chairman?
Sir?
We started out going through the budget. The ones that, I mean, we obviously paid as much attention to every budget that we had, but we really tried hard to make sure that we, um, didn't make any significant changes to the school and to the sheriff's department. Those were two areas that we really emphasized in trying to keep them intact. And wanted to say, you know, obviously we wanted to keep everybody intact if we could have, but we really placed a lot of emphasis on looking in the, in, uh.
The sheriff's department's getting roughly fifty thousand less than they got last year?
Three thousand in, in part-time, right?
But one of those is a vehicle because they got four vehicles in this current year budget. So they asked for four more and we funded three more for the upcoming budget. That's part of it. And the other part of it is in computer expense because the vehicle has to have the laptop in the vehicle. So that's the other part of that.
Now, back to the beginning, you're cutting thirteen thousand out of the part-time sheriff? And you're cutting?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand out of overtime?
We met with Shane to talk about that and he was very concerned about that. And what I, what I told him is what I, what I told Garrison, I said, we need to get that, that much money out of your budget. We don't care what line item it's gonna come from, but we need, we need that to happen. And please remember that the, the effect of giving one big department, a big chunk of change has a domino effect all the way across the board. It's not as simple as just saying they deserve more money than that. If you don't, if we don't have some guidance from you as to where you want us to take that money from, then it can, it can be, I mean, it's, just think that through, you know? I'm just asking you to think it through. If we still need to do it, we need to do it. But, um, saying he needs that thirty thousand dollars back. I got thirty thousand dollars taken from a bunch of little budgets is gonna cause a lot of people to come before you and say, we got cheated out of this, we got cheated out of that, and you're gonna make a cycle occur.
We've done that before.
Because everybody's.
In that conversation with Shane, does he feel comfortable or confident that he could possibly take it from some other lines? Or did, what, what?
Didn't get that feeling from him, but he wants to come and talk to you all.
Okay.
On Thursday. Now, he was very reasonable. It was a very reasonable discussion. And I tried to explain to him like I'm doing with you all that, you know, we're, you know, work with us. We tried to keep you as intact as we could, but we can't, uh, we're gonna have to go back and it's gonna cause a ripple effect. As each department probably does and should do, they're thinking of their own, they're thinking of their department. You know, how do I get the, the, what I think I need for my department? What we have to do is think, how can we keep the budget within the revenue that we have? And that means everybody's got to put a little skin in the game.
How did the, the, to date, um, current budget thing work on the part-time and overtime, Sheriff? Did you see some savings in there? Like?
Yeah, one of them's right on, right on the money.
They're on target.
Yeah, one of them's on target. One of them, no, it's not on target. But what normally happens with especially the larger departments, you're gonna have turnover. And when you have turnover, you're gonna have somebody coming in at a lower salary than the person that went out. You're also gonna have a gap in the insurance coverage and things like that.
And a gap in the sal- in paying the salary.
Paying the salary and the FICA and the retirement and everything. So what it ends up, and that's why we, we save those salary things till the end of the year and do all of those end of year adjustments on the sat-
This forty-three thousand is coming out of the sheriff's department? There's any of that coming out of the jails?
Jail has a separate budget.
Good deal. Okay, so that's all coming out of sheriff's department?
Yes.
Forty-three thousand.
How, how many SRO officers are funded?
Uh, one at each elementary school and one at high school. And the high school is the supervisor, so four altogether.
Those are grants, most of them, right?
No, two of them are.
Two of them are grants and two of them's tax dollars.
Discussion, the last budget about another SRO or a part-time SRO to fill in when one SRO is sick on vacation or?
That was one of Shane's discussions with us, is they have used some part-time people when somebody's been out sick or something. And that happens across the board, whether it's a patrol lieutenant, you know, patrol person or an SRO. They use those part-time to fill in.
The SRO officer has to have specific training.
They do not.
These other officers don't.
They do not.
You have to have one dedicated for that training for an SRO. Isn't that correct?
I've, I've got, had some deep conversations with Shane. And number one is they do not have to have specific training. They could use any deputy they want to. If they do start using them there more permanently, they will send them to more training. But if, say today, if somebody's sick, they can pull somebody off and send them out there. And Shane also said that they have that worked out to where they have some, some coverage from some of the other deputies. So they don't have, I don't think they have that issue as much now. Um, because they weren't, matter of fact, they never put the SRO officer in there, in their budget to ask this time, correct?
Right.
They did not put it in there. So they got it figured out, basically.
Okay, if you say so.
Yeah, he, I asked that specific question. I said, do they have to have specific training to go? Like if somebody's sick for a week or out for whatever reason, he said, no, we can use any deputy we have.
But if they're a permanent SRO.
If they're gonna stay there permanently, then they start training.
Yeah.
But there's nothing that says in the rules that they cannot use a, just a deputy that I get out on the road or something. So, yep.
Looks like we could have rotated deputies all along without paying for the special SRO. If that's.
Well, if you do that, you pull them off the road though.
That may be, that's a good point. But it sounds like that, that has been remedied. So we don't have an issue with the SRO officer at schools anymore.
Okay.
Some of that part-time I use too for the ballgames and stuff when the school wants them to. Uh, upper.
I think the SROs do that.
Yeah, but I think some deputies also.
So when the, go back to my original question, we're cutting the sheriff's department by forty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-four dollars.
That's what it is there.
It is.
From last year, yes.
So we're defunding our police department, sheriff's department.
One less vehicle and the equipment to go in the vehicle in that budget than there was last year.
Yeah, I would definitely not say we are defunding our police department.
Got this much last year, you're getting this much this year. There's a reduction.
Every single year, some things are purchased that are not needed to be purchased the next year. It's not like, you know, budgets are not absolutely intact from one year to the next. You might buy four vehicles one year and the next year buy three. And so you, you don't have, and it may appear that the budget is lower than it was the year before.
But forty-three thousand of this is cutting salaries, not in capital.
Doesn't have to be. It could be from any line item.
That's the way it is on paper.
Well, it has to be something to give to them to, to work with, but they can.
You don't keep buying cars for people not to ride in them.
Right.
And if they have turnover, this will play out. You know, these, these line item transfers that I bring to the board for overtime and dispatch and law enforcement, that, that's the playing out of that.
Help, help me out a little bit here. I'm getting confused. We got a line item budget, but the line item budget can be changed by the department head or whoever. You don't have to follow this, these line items.
I'm talking about before we get to the point where we are putting things in, in stone. We're in a discussion phase right now. And what we've done, done is give you a draft. And so within that draft, there, I mean, you could just say, you could say to me, okay, by the next time we meet, get thirty thousand more dollars out of the, out of the budget. And we'd have to go back and do that. What I'm trying to do is involve the, the, the department heads in making those decisions before things get set in stone. When they're set in stone, they cannot do that. They can't go from one line item to another. It's only during this creation stage that they can.
So once the budget is adopted, line item is what they can spend it on. They can't take five percent out of one and add it into another.
Right, unless they, would, would they need to come back and ask for, uh, the budget amendment?
There's, there is a process to do a line item transfer through the finance officer, five thousand dollars. Yeah, it's a cap on it. And after, say, we run out of part-time and EMS, I'm gonna use EMS because that does happen. Then we'll go back to his budget and we'll look and see where he's got a little bit of extra for the year and we'll do that line item transfer. If he goes over that five thousand dollars, then it comes to the board at that point. And I, you know, I present it to the board and the board asks questions.
The five thousand is the magic number.
Five thousand's the magic number. And that's within our capabilities with general statutes.
That's the, the purchase, Sheriff, hundred-and-sixty-seven by fifty.
Three vehicles.
Three vehicles. Any other questions? Not moving on over dispatch. Eight thousand out of the overtime salaries on the, they fully staffed over?
They are.
Good deal.
Again, that's another thing that should play out. If they start having turnover, then yes, they'll start using more part-time and overtime and, but that would allow some free up of money. Yeah. The biggest difference in the dispatch budget is the additional tower at Roaring Gap on that rent of tower space. That's the biggest difference in that dispatch, but with community.
Has it helped speaking of communications?
Give me a question.
Yes, it has helped tremendously.
We're in.
Not necessarily on the Pine Creek end, but it has, it has helped Law Springs and Glade Creek area. It has helped. Still not perfect, but it has helped.
Eighty-one thousand arena?
Uh, several towers.
That's, that's all the towers.
Six, seven. Speaking of tires, do we rent one over on Buck Mountain? That came to me last night at a meeting. Supposed to be in to help Pine Creek.
I believe we do, yes. And, and they also, um, we also, for Little Grandfather and for Fisher Peak, we added one there that should help Pine Creek some and did. When, when we put those two in, we turned, we put, turned that one on and then turned the one on Little Grandfather off and it cut it back. So we turned it back on, which helps the triangulated system. So they all kind of communicate, bounce off of each other. And that has, that has helped too. Again, it's still not perfect, but it is better.
Okay. Needs to be, don't it?
It does. It really does. It does.
Any other questions on dispatch? Moving on, Roaring Gap deputies.
So we've had a Roaring Gap deputy retire lately and Roaring Gap Club has made the decision just to fund one deputy moving forward.
Their own security.
But the one that's retiring, is he still on some of our retirement?
He, he's on our retirement. Well, he, he retired like he's supposed to through the North Carolina system. Um, he has the insurance and Roaring Gap is paying seventy-five percent of two retirees now. So that's, you know, what, everything that comes with that.
Now they're just gonna fund at this point, one.
That's one full-time deputy, then they got a part-time?
Got Squeak Edwards for security.
Okay.
Full-time deputy. It's all that's on our, in the general fund.
And we is, we're not paying for anything?
For the new guy.
Not anymore.
Not for the deputy. Now, we're paying twenty-five percent for the two retirees and everything that goes with that.
We ain't paying none of the security for out there that hired.
That's, that's a private contract.
Any other questions? Next page, animal control. I believe that's Mr. Spicer's department.
Yeah, we, we've made a reduction on some of that so that, um, not all the things was used this time. And we've been able to purchase equipment and things that, that has been, um, very useful. And it has a, a long-term usefulness. So, um, not having to buy equipment every year.
Septic tank, is it about the same?
That has been corrected and fixed. They come up, they was, um, they, it wound up being a water line that was broken that nobody knew about and was filling the tank up. So that has been fixed and, and it's been corrected. So that's not having to be pumped out every other day now.
How often did you figure to pump it?
It's not been pumped that I know of since they found that broken pipe.
All those years?
Yeah.
Animal shelter going along pretty good?
Yes, it is, and the inspections have been very, very, she's been very nice to us. Yeah.
Good deal. I notice it's dropped back 8,000 there from last year.
Yeah.
Any other questions? How does that cutback affect what we pay them out there? Is that coming off their end or is that coming from somewhere else?
Um, we have actually, that's been just a little bit over budgeted. Um, the the funds that have been sent to them has been averaging out about 13,000. Um, so that that's a quarter. So it's not taking as much. Um, they continue to get food donations and things like that, which it helps the cost of that tremendously, so that that has helped us in turn.
Now, we got caught up in that court, deal with that dog back there for sort of like an eternity.
Yeah.
That cost us a lot of money.
It did cost us a lot of money.
I was glad to see we took care of that.
I I got a question.
Fire.
On animal disposal at the transfer facility.
Yes, sir.
We charge a fee for cattle.
Yes, sir.
But if you wind up with somebody else's dead animal on your property, and how are you supposed to dispose of it if it's not your animal to start with?
Unless you can prove whose it is. The burden of proof falls on the owner or the keeper in that case.
Never mind.
Sorry.
Well, it's a.
I just made him coyote bait.
It's a few minutes before 5:00. Right here's a good time to break. Go ahead, Bill.
Chairman, can I just, can I add one thing before we go?
Yes, sir.
Um, just for you to think about. So, uh, the league of municipal, the league of municipalities uh, puts out statistics on that they get from surveys that are done of the county governments, and they just put out their latest survey showing projections for increases in salaries for the counties for next fiscal year. And it really is, it's divided by the size of the population of a county. And the the counties in our population category are projecting that they're going to, they go, they will average a 4.4% request for what's called the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment. They're projecting a 4.4% uh, increase in the 10,000 to 25,000 person counties. For what that's worth, so you have some basis of comparison.
Is there anything to add, comments or anything? Dave?
I'm good.
I I appreciate the the way the board is interacting with each other and with us on on getting this to an area that we all feel comfortable with.
Because Thursday at the jail, right there on, starts evening. Greg, you getting comments?
I'm good. We're going to meet at the jail?
Meet at the jail.
No, I'm good. I'm good. No, it's just the way you said it. We'll take up at the jail.
Dial right here. It's 2 o'clock, right? 3 o'clock?
Yeah, 3.
3 o'clock. We do have three folks that'll be with us. That would be Brandon Kenner from the Forest Service, Shane Glenn from Law and Forestry, and Miranda Rube, registered deeds.
Is is the Thursday going to be televised? Well, I mean, we've got nobody here today.
That's the plan. I mean, that's been the standing rule, so.
I didn't know if they're going to be in the back room.
I'm not sure on Thursday, but but Kate's back, I mean, Kate was back there today, so.
Sure, everybody's time. Been a good, good little budget session. We'll be back Thursday. Meeting adjourned.